Good evening and welcome to the March 8, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting, City of Menlo Park. We called to order this meeting at 7:02 PM. We start with our roll call of commissioners. Mr. Barnes is absent this evening. Mr. DeCarty?
Present.
Mr. Doran, Vice Chair? Is present. Mr. Cale?
Present.
Present. Ms. Kennedy is not present tonight. Commissioner Tate is present.
Present.
And I am your Chair, Henry Ricks. We will note for the sake of order that a commission is required to have a majority of its members present in order to conclude any business. At this time, we have five out of seven. There is the possibility that one commissioner may have to leave at nine o'clock. That would still leave us a quorum pending any other changes. Alright, so this evening, we will start with reports and announcements. Ms. Sandomeyer, anything new?
Yes, good evening Chair Ricks and Commissioners. So tomorrow night, the City Council will continue their discussion on their priorities and adoption of their work plan. And that's at the meeting tomorrow evening. And that concludes my reports and announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Sandomeyer? Alright, seeing none. We'll start our evening as usual with the public comment period. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed on the consent calendar such as meeting minutes approval. Each speaker may address the commission under the public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. In order to make public comment, under the GoToWebinar system, you would look to the control panel on the right side of your screen. Look for the hand icon and click on that. That will tell staff that someone out there would like to make comment at this time on something not on the agenda. I will give us a few moments for people to check the to look for that hand and give it a click.
Good evening Chair, not seeing any comments at this time. But as always, we can give it a couple of seconds or a minute, see if any filter in.
Alright, doesn't appear that we have anything in the public comment period although we may well later on the specific projects. So at this time, I'll close the initial public comment period and we'll move on to our consent calendar. There is one item this evening and that is approval of the minutes and transcript from the January 25, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. It is actually in two parts, given that the EIR is covered by a transcript. Does anyone have comments on the minutes? Yes, Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I need to poll them because I want to request one minor change.
Absolutely. Will there be any other comments? I have some changes too. Alright, let's, let's begin that. So, Mr. DeCarty, what items have you found or item?
It's just one, it's very minor. It's page six, paragraph two, line 13. In the sentence, there is the word note, N-O-T-E, which should be not, N-O-T.
Alright.
And that's it for me.
And that is a significant legal difference. And Ms. Sandomeyer, I don't know if you received the five paragraphs in my email rather late around 6:00 PM tonight. But I think to get them into the minutes, I will need to read them.
That's correct.
I did put them together rather hastily, so I hope I have these right. In fact, you know what, I'm going to go to the originals. On page 29, line one, the sentence is, "Method is you look for the handy con that is on the right of your screen." It's a minor item, but that was hand icon. Then on page 36, lines 16 through 18, I believe it was Mr. Prada speaking, saying tho- those, "So those will be looked out in the EIR, but the hazard point part will be scoped out, especially one to make should clear." I wonder if we could rewrite that. It may be that Mr. Prada said they will be locked out. The implication prior to that was that those were item, that was an item already resolved.
Chair Ricks, could you clarify where you are in the document? Are you on the EIR on page 36 or are you in the PDF on page 36?
I'm sorry, all of this is the EIR transcript.
Thank you.
Now, our minutes were quite good as they have been repeatedly, I think for, for a year. And then on page 40, lines 17 through 20, what is the proposal here for altern- providing for alternative transit? Has that been analyzed by the prospective group of residents that are anticipated? It wouldn't be analyzed by the prespec- prospective group. It would be analyzed in regard to or per the prospective group of residents. And then on page 42, lines 17 through 20, and then the production are, are quantified by an org, which is, I don't know the full acronym of, of top of my mind, dot, dot, dot. I believe that is a reference to reduction, specifically reduction in traffic count. And then on page 43, I think it's a similar. Yes, on line three, page 43. To answer your question, yes, we can apply production measures. And again, I'm pretty sure that's a reduction as in TMP. So those are my contributions to the edits.
Through the Chair, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you for those and we'll have the court reporter check those again. But if someone misspoke, it does have to be verbatim. But I think in some cases, it might be that the transcript isn't correct. So we'll check, we'll check all those. Thank you.
Understood. Alright. With that, if those are acceptable, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Doran, motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Can you hear me? I'd also like to check.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yes, I move to approve.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Mr. Cale, thank you. So we have a motion and second on the table. Let's go ahead and vote on approval of the minutes of January 25. All those in favor, I guess, hand up. And that is unanimous tonight. The five present commissioners with Mr. Barnes and Ms. Kennedy absent. Alright, that concludes our consent calendar portion of the meeting and we move ahead to our public hearing. We have four items tonight on the public hearing. First item was continued from the Planning Commission Meeting of February 22. And we we have applicant barrage bias, and I do hope I'm pronouncing the applicant's names somewhere close to correctly, for 224 Hedge Road, which would be Suburban Park. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R1-U, single-family urban residential zoning district. And Mr. Paz, do you have anything to add to our to our project tonight?
There are no updates to the staff report at this time. Staff are available to answer any questions and the applicant has also prepared a brief presentation of the project details.
Alright, well, if the applicant is prepared, yes, Mr. Cale?
Sorry, I had two quick questions for, for Ori. In the staff report, it's mentioned to, for us to think about the distribution of material treatments at the side and at the rear. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. One thing you may notice is there are a number of material treatments at the front facade that wrap a portion of the way around.
I apologize, my, my screen is frozen for the five of you at this time.
Okay, are you, are you able to hear me, Chair Ricks? Alright, this is Ori.
Yeah, yeah, I'm able to hear you Ori, but this will be asked by the applicant. So I don't know if our Chair Ricks is able to hear me.
Okay, that, that's good to know. Are, are any of the other listeners able to hear me? You can, not, okay. Okay, and I see maybe Chair Chair Ricks locked off for a moment, so Karina, just as a point of order, should I just continue with the explanation or should we hold for the Chair to return?
Yeah, it's probably, you can continue. I think that's fine.
Okay. I'll continue. So I think where I left off was explaining that at the, at the front of the building, the front facade is features a number of material treatments that extend a portion of the way on, on the side and stop a portion of the way on the side and do not continue around the entirety of the building. This is in something that the commission has commented on in the past and it was raised in, in light of those earlier discussions with the commission about that inconsistency with facade treatment across the entire building.
Okay. And my second question is, on the front elevation, I see these vertical wood elements around the windows. And I know, I think this project is up against the maximum floor area. I think those are added in addition to the calculations. Is that acceptable?
So could you describe the, the feature?
Sure. In the front elevation, one more time. On the north elevation, on the either side of the second floor windows, there's a a column-like element that's noted, wood trim with stucco finish. And on the floor area calculations, those, those are on the floor plan, but they're not on the floor area calculations.
Good evening, folks. I'm coming back via the phone. I seem to have lost once again my Comcast connection. Can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Alright, and I'm afraid I will not, it does not look like I'll have images tonight, at least unless the network comes back up. But I don't think that will prevent us from marching through the marching through the agenda. So, Mr. Cale, were you speaking?
Yes, I have the two questions for Mr. Paz and he was just about to address the second one.
Alright, please go ahead.
Thank you. So the, the second question was about the column-like features at the, at the front and that they are not reflected on the floor area diagrams. That's something that we can, we can look into. Columns, columns at the ground floor do typically count as floor area as we measure to the the exterior of the framing material. And I can, I can look into this quickly while we're discussing this item. That's alright.
Thank you. Do we have other questions at this time? Any other questions prior to public comment? Alright, hearing none. And from time to time, Mr. Tapia, I'm going to ask, I'm going to check in with you to know that I'm still connected. Can you confirm?
Yes, I can hear you Chair Ricks. And if I may, through the Chair, I believe the applicants had a brief presentation. I don't know if you wanted to do that before the public comment period.
We do. Yes, thank you.
So that presentation is going to be done by Mr. Greg Zierman, our architect. Greg, are you on the call?
I think I'm here.
Excellent.
Good to begin?
Yes, please.
Good evening Commissioners. We're here tonight to present our proposed project located at 224 Hedge Road. The existing 1,200 square foot home with its small bedrooms and outdated floor plan, one-car garage and carport no longer meets the needs of the, of the owners. The existing residence will be deconstructed and a minimum of 65% of the building materials will be recycled, reused, or donated. We're proposing a new two-story home with 2,367 square feet of true living area. And this home will have a two-car garage as opposed to a one-car garage. We also included a rear uncovered patio. The project includes an extremely detailed arborist report that we've included that discusses the condition, health, and impact of the new construction on all of the existing trees on our property as well as the existing trees on all of the adjacent properties or adjoining properties. Our design and location of the proposed home adheres to the recommendations in the report and offers the least impact to all of those existing trees. The proposed two-story home is designed in the modern style and the exterior facade will incorporate smooth stucco, stone veneer, and wood window trim. The exterior colors will be earth tone, tan, and beige. And we will include a charcoal gray metal standing seam roof. The entire second floor has been purposely set back from all of the lower level exterior walls to reduce the second level bulk and mass. All of the bedroom windows have been designed and located for the privacy of not only the property owner, but the privacy of the adjoining side neighbors. Our team has worked closely with the planning staff to create a new home that meets or exceeds all of the R1-U zoning ordinance requirements. And our goal was to design a new modern style home, excuse me, that not only met the needs of a growing family, but also had the least amount of impact on the existing trees. We are also very sensitive to the privacy of the neighbors. We feel that the proposed home design has an attractive exterior that will be well-suited for the neighborhood. For the reasons just stated and based on the recommendations of the planning staff, we would request that the Planning Commission approve the proposed project located at 224 Hedge Road as submitted. And that concludes my presentation.
Alright, thank you. Commissioners, any initial questions before we go to public comment? And you'll have to speak up, I apologize, rather than raise your hands since I can't see anything. Just for the record, I do, I do have the drawings up on my iPad, however. Yeah, go ahead. Yes.
Just as a point of process, maybe to smooth this along, perhaps you could appoint Vice Chair Doran to scan the video screens and report back to you if there are no hands or no questions so that, that, that might move us along. Just a suggestion to take or leave.
I'm certainly open to the suggestion. Mr. Doran, does that make sense to you?
Sure, happy to do that. I can, I can still see everyone for the moment. Actually, I can only see three Commissioners on screen, Tate, Cale, and DeCarty. So I assume there's only the five of us here tonight?
Yes, with yourself and then I am not on the screen and two are absent. That's correct.
Okay. Yes, I will scan the screen for hands.
Thank you. We do our best to accommodate. Alright, so, and no comments before we go to public comment then? Mr. Doran?
There are no hands raised.
Alright, thank you. So at this point, we invite public comments on the project. You can make comment on a project at a GoToMeeting held hearing by looking to the right of your screen at the GoToWebinar control panel. Where you see a hand icon, you can click on that hand icon. That tells staff that you would like to speak regarding this project. This is the only comment period that will apply to this project and you will have three minutes to speak. So we'll give maybe half a minute to see if anyone so indicates. And please feel free to speak up, Mr. Tapia, as soon as you see any indication.
Thank you Chair. Yes, at this moment, I'm not seeing any public comments. But as usual, we can give it a minute or two to see if any come through.
Alright, so not hearing of any hands raised. I would, I will bring this back to the commission for discussion of the project, potentially a motion. Mr. Doran, do I have any comment? Any hands raised?
You do. Commissioner Cale has his hand raised.
Mr. Cale, please.
Thank you. I have a few questions for the applicant. So for me, I, I live in this neighborhood and actually, when I met my wife, she lived next door, so I want to, I want to see a success, successful project here. And I think it fits the neighborhood, but I'm not quite seeing the connection to the the modern prairie that was cited in the staff report. So I was hoping you could speak to that a bit because in, in that style, there's a lot of horizontal elements and deep eaves and, and, and this design, I'm seeing a lot of vertical elements and not-so-deep eaves. And the roof is, has lots of hips and valleys. It's not as this kind of straightforward as it might otherwise be. Could you, can you speak to the discrepancy?
So I'll let Greg address the else, but you know, I'm not that qualified architecturally to say what a true prairie architecture, modern prairie looks like versus, you know, what you see here. But, you know, our goal was to, to follow some design as a starting point and essentially arrive something that blends in well with the neighborhood as well as is aesthetically appealing. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I also wanted to ask if you could speak to the, the, the planning staff's comment and I tend to agree about the, the elements, the, the, the materials on the sides versus the front, how the, sort of the distribution of them kind of stop in one sense as they turn the corner. I'm not exactly sure how to ask the question, but I wanted to give you a chance to talk about that.
Yes, I can speak to that. The accent material is the adhered stone wainscoting. And other than the entry columns and the side of the garage mimicking a column, the rest of the horizontal, the stone is, is very horizontal and a wainscoting in nature. And so to extend it beyond the fence and gate on the right side didn't seem feasible and doesn't add or take away, I guess, or add to any of the curb appeal. The stony amount of stone and that earth tone color and, and base that the wainscoting would bring to the front facade. I extended it all the way down to the next protruding pop-out, so to speak, on the left side and didn't take any into account, you know, where the fence would, would stop the stone on that because we had a natural point in the architecture, the design of the floor plan to actually stop or discontinue the stone at. Not having that typical or logical location on the right-hand side, I chose to use the fence and the gate as the stopping or terminating point for the stone.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to ask if you'd be open to one change, which would be to go with a deeper eve, maybe. I don't know if it looks like it's maybe a 12-inch overhang now. Just citing, you know, a nipple for modern prairie, if you'd be interested in going to something deeper like a foot and a half or two feet.
We originally had a much, not much, a little bit deeper eve. I believe it was 18 inches or 20 inches. However, the upper, Mr. Paz already had pointed out that the upper left side would penetrate the daylight plane if we kept it that way. Now, the ordinance states that the gutter and eve may penetrate into the daylight plane, however, the roof cannot. So it, it's a subjective determination, I guess, or, or on that ordinance or that portion of the ordinance. Yes, I would prefer a little bit deeper eve to go along better with the prairie design or modern style with a little bit larger overhang. If we would be allowed to. If we would be allowed to penetrate the daylight plane, I, I would certainly be in favor of that. Um, or if we could lower, put a, a deeper overhang or a larger overhang on the lower level, um, and not the upper level, that would also be a possibility.
Well, in my opinion, I think it should be consistent throughout, so I wouldn't propose to do it on one floor, not the other. And so it sounds like you're, you've modified all the overhangs because of one bed, bedroom two, it looks like, that's close to the property line or close to the setback line.
Yes, yes.
Bedroom two or the master bedroom?
Bedroom two. Okay, well, that, uh, that answers my questions. Um, Chair Riggs.
If we were to bring up the upstairs floor plan, it may be, it may be both bedrooms if that wall is aligned.
Uh, no, no, I, I misread. The most, the, the master bedroom extends into the rear yard.
Okay, okay.
All right, um, thank you. Those are items on the table. And does anyone else, um, have a, uh, comment on this project?
There are no other hands.
All right, thank you. Um, then I will contribute. I also was, um, searching for connections to the, um, prairie style, and I realized, uh, while some window proportions were vaguely in the prairie style, uh, if we simply remove that, um, somewhat stretched description and say, here's a uh, creative design based on a variety of, uh, past architectural styles, how does the commission feel? Uh, and, and maybe that's the simpler way. The first thing I would like to clarify, though, is that on the elevations, you've clearly shown standing seam metal roof at both floors, and you have called it out as such on the elevations. But I believe I saw in the project description that you wanted to downgrade the upper roof to, uh, conventional composite shingles. Is that correct?
That must, that must be a typo from a previous, um, project description. Uh, in the, in the beginning, we were going to, uh, go with a composition shingle roof, and it just have the porch roof and the garage roof being an accent, so to speak, with a standing seam roof. And after submitting a proposed elevation and discussing it further with planning staff, uh, we all came to the, uh, agreement that it would be best if both roofs were of the same material. So that just stands, is still a typo, I guess, remaining in an unrevised or, um, possibly missed that, that description in our project description.
Okay. Well, that, that solves that fairly well. So my only remaining item would be, uh, what Mr. Cale brought up about the stone. You noted that, uh, you wanted to terminate the stone at the fence, although your right side elevation shows it terminating at the width of a column, whereas the fence is five foot back from the face of the garage. Um, also, the garage is a distinct architectural element. So, uh, would it be, um, consistent with your design to wrap, uh, a, uh, adhered stone veneer wainscot around the garage and terminating whatever that is, uh, just around the corner by the, uh, looks like utility doors?
You know, I, I agree with that suggestion. Um, we had a wainscot on the right side of the garage at one point in time. But after looking at it several times, uh, again with planning staff, we all determined it looked a little lopsided to the porch column, so we changed it to mimic a porch column, so the stone now went up to the underside of the eve. Um, I am in favor of that suggestion. Uh, I would let the homeowner, um, speak to that. But after it was, um, let's just say, after it mimics the porch column in size and, and depth, it would then drop down to the same wainscoting height that runs along the garage wall to the front porch and the same wainscoting height that runs along the entire living room, dining room side of the house. So I would be, I, I would agree with that suggestion and, and be in favor of that change.
All right, well, that's great. Um, uh, perhaps you would check in then with, uh, with your owner. Um, as for the deeper eaves, I'll just throw out consideration, uh, especially since you were actually interested in having the, the deeper eaves, as I think I would be as well. It does appear that, and this does happen from time to time, that one architectural element could have a different eve projection. And that would be bedroom number two. And it is not in plane with other walls.
I would not have a problem with that. I would have to have the other commissioners, uh, speak to that.
Okay. Yes, I would, I would too, since, uh, it's kind of risky to come up with ideas during a hearing, uh, and, and not get them a little bit sorted, but most importantly, you would have to be open to it.
I, I am open to that. Yes, certainly.
All right, um, Mr. Cale, does that sound like a tolerable condition to have that one module, bedroom two, um, have a different eve projection because of the, because of the setback?
Um, uh, thanks for the question. That's an interesting point. Um, my first thought was maybe to drop that whole roof section on bedroom two down a foot so that it didn't have the, the problem. But, uh, either one could work. I think the devil's sort of in the details of how it wraps into the front wall and how this all resolves itself. So, uh, I think one way or another, if we can get the deeper eaves, it would really benefit this house a lot. Um, so I'm in favor of exploring that one way or another.
All right, and would you want to make that, um, a condition of approval or an advisory, um, to staff and the applicant?
Um, I'm torn. I would say, uh, I'm leaning towards a condition of approval.
All right. All right, at this point, any other comments now that we've, uh, prompted, um, with some potential changes on the project?
Commissioner DeCarty has his hand raised.
Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, in general, uh, this is a project, um, that is similar to others I've commented on in the past that passes all conditions, um, that we put on regulating buildings in this city, but for the fact it's on a substandard lot. Um, it also proportionally fits on a substandard lot. It's not like it takes up a proportionally, um, huge amount of extra space. This is a project recommended to be approved as submitted, uh, by staff, which leads me to believe that staff would approve similar projects of similar design in standard lots and other places in the city. And therefore, I'm not in favor of putting conditions um, on this project for this applicant, although I think the advisory guidance, uh, is completely, um, worth it and, and good to put in place. So for me, I would just, on, and any condition that we were putting on this project, would want to absolutely understand from the applicant that they are in favor of it and would like to do it. That's my comment.
All right, fair enough.
Chair, would you raise your hand?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Mr. DeCarty on this one. Um, you know, I would be all in favor of, you know, an advisory condition to the architect to consider doing that. But, um, I, I think, I feel like we're getting a little too wrapped up around the reference to prairie style architecture. I think it's an attractive house, it fits in the lot, and it's an improvement to the neighborhood. So I would like to leave it in the discretion of the architect and the owner if they want to change the, uh, the eaves. That's my feeling.
All right, um, point well made. Um, would, uh, anyone like to craft a motion at this point? All right, well, I will. Um, I will move that, uh, we approve the project um, with two two changes. One is that the stone wainscot, be continued around the garage on the right side. I'm sorry, is that the left side?
Right side. The right side we were talking about.
Okay, thank you. And and actually, uh, we already confirmed the roofing, so that would be the only one, uh, as a requirement. And then the other would just be the planning commission's, um, suggestion that the house could look better with the extended eaves, and that if it were so submitted, except for bedroom number two, as needed to meet the, um, daylight plain code. And I worded that way because I can see how that might be an area that needs further discussion. That that would be, uh, considered approvable under this hearing. So if that makes sense, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Doran.
If I may, Chair Riggs, this is planner Paz here, um, with respect to the first condition of approval to extend the stone, the stone wainscoting around the right. Um, just for, for everyone's benefit, can you please specify how far along the right elevation you would like to continue?
Yeah, I think so, since we do have dimensions here. Assuming I get to the first floor. So it would extend from the implied column currently shown, approximately 20 feet down the side of the garage, and then approximately five feet into the utility closet to end on an inside corner.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. All right, um, any comments? Uh, if not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. DeCarty has his hand raised.
Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, could I just, um, through the chair, could I just check with the applicant that that the way this is, um, been composed is, uh, acceptable and, and works well for you?
Yeah, please.
Yes, as the designer, I, I, I concur and agree with, um, that proposed change to the plan.
Great, thank you very much.
Do the chair, if I can ask for one clarification, if that's okay? Um, for the eve extensions, there's also the limitation, I think, on the right side by the garage. It looks like that eve is at the, possibly at the maximum encroachment. So the condition would be for any eve extensions to, but to be within the maximum permitted encroachment and not including to the daylight.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that clarification, yes. All right, uh, unless, uh, Mr. Doran, you see any other hands raised, I think we're ready to vote. And, um, yes?
No, there's no other hands.
All right, thank you. So, uh, I'll simply call out for the vote. Um, starting with Mr. DeCarty.
Yes.
And Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mr. Cale?
Yes.
Ms. Tate? Ms. Tate, are you present?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot you couldn't see me. Yes.
Thank you. And, uh, I also vote yes. So of the six commissioners present, we have, uh, a unanimous vote, I'm sorry, of the five commissioners present, with Mr. Barnes and Ms. Kennedy absent. All right, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you for your time, all of you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so that concludes, um, item F1. Move ahead to item F2. This is a use permit applicants Bryant Lynn and Christine Chan at 201 McHenry Drive. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and detached garage and construct a new two-story residence with attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width, depth, and area in the R1U, single-family urban residential zoning district. Um, Ms. Maedor, are there any updates on our project?
Um, I don't have any updates, but happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. And, Mr. Doran, do we see any, uh, indication of, uh, questions?
Mr. DeCarty's hands raised.
Mr. DeCarty, please.
Great, thank you. Ms. Maedor, on, um, attachment C in the, or C1, um, which is the chart that has the specs around the proposed project, existing development and zoning ordinance. Um, on the building coverage, the building coverage is a calculation of the percentage of the lot that it, um, covers. If we look at the zoning ordinance, it says that the max is 1,751.8 square feet, which is 35% coverage of a 7,000 square foot lot. The proposed project at 1,747 is at 34.9% with a lot area that is 5,005 feet. I just wanted to confirm that in the proposed project, how, how do those numbers square? And is the proposed project actually still a calculation off of the zoning ordinance as opposed to the square footage of the lot in the proposed project?
Let me see, I'm trying to look at the plans for the numbers.
Is it okay for me to comment on this?
Yeah, if you have, like, information, it could be that my numbers are wrong in there.
My understanding is that the, the coverage limitation is 35%, and the calculation based on the 5,005 square foot lot is accurate. I believe that the maximum coverage that's under the zoning ordinance with the max of 7,000 square feet would be where there's an inconsistency.
Through the chair, if I may add something. Um, so the way, the way we do the data table, the the zoning ordinance maximum is for that lot. So for a 7,000 square foot lot, there would be a different maximum. But what we're trying to show is for this lot, the maximum is 1,751.8, and the proposal is 1,747.0. So we're trying to compare the maximum they can build and what they're proposing versus what a standard lot, we're not showing what a standard lot, um, what could be developed in a standard lot. And I understand that's a little confusing, but that's it's consistent with past, um, the way we've done past data tables. But if the commission has an interest in us, um, updating the format, we can do that too.
That explanation works for me, and I, it's consistent all the way through. That explanation works for me, and I, consistent all the way through, then I'm fine with that. But, thank you, Ms. Sannamire, that completely answers my question.
All right, thank you. Any other questions at this stage?
Not seeing any other hands.
Thank you. So so, Ms. Maedor, do we have a presentation tonight, or shall we move ahead with the drawings?
So the applicant was going to give, like, a short introduction, but we don't have, like, a visual presentation, we can certainly pull up the plans if we want.
I think that would be great if you all can have the plans on shared screen, and I have them on my iPad. So a verbal presentation is absolutely fine.
So is it something that I would share my screen, or would you be sharing that?
No, we can share it for you, and we can just, like, pull up the elevations, or if you'd prefer the site plan. But if you just wanted to give, like, kind of a brief introduction, it doesn't have to be anything super detailed.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Well, first, I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Katie Costiuk, I'm an architect, and I've been committed to architecture since I was 15, when I decided to be an architect. And I've been working in the Bay Area for the last 10 years after going back east for school. And I've been working in Menlo Park for quite a while, but surprisingly, this is my first use permit application. And I wanted to thank you all for your time this evening. I'm also on a design review committee for San Mateo County, so I understand the dedication and the commitment, and I definitely appreciate that, particularly since you do it in the evening hours. So thank you all for your time. I wanted to introduce my clients, Christine Chan and Bryant Lynn. They wanted to speak for a moment and just give you a little bit of their history, and then I'll speak very briefly to the project, since I know that you have a lot of projects on the agenda this evening.
Hi, I'm Christine Chan.
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Christine Chan.
And I'm Bryant Lynn, and we've lived in Menlo Park for 13 years. We've, we're raising our two, two young boys here, nine and 13. They go to the local public schools at Laurel and Hillview, and we're really excited to, especially after this past year, to continue our time, but in hopefully a better, nicer house. A house is quite on its last legs, and we're looking forward to living many, many more years in Menlo Park.
All right, thank you.
So I'll speak very briefly to the project overview. I'm sure that you've all read through the documentation, that there's an existing single-story bungalow, it's in a little bit of disrepair, it's built in 1947, I believe, and it has an attached, I'm sorry, a detached one-car garage and an attached tandem carport. We've approached this design with a classic craftsman style, since that seems to be very fitting for the neighborhood and generally appealing to a lot of different design styles. We've also included ornamentation that's in keeping with the craftsman style with white trim and complementing two-tone color palette. The new home is four bedrooms with three full bathrooms and one half bathroom. One of the bedroom suites is located on the first floor for extended family to visit, and also for the owners to be able to age in place. Another interesting fact about this property, which I think we run into a lot in Menlo Park, it is in a flood zone, so we, we had to obviously have the design and flood elevation being one foot higher than the base flood elevation. With the height restrictions, that proposed a bit of a challenge, but we've really made a big effort for the design to stay significantly under the maximum height, to reduce the mass and scale of the project. And additionally, we've paid a lot of attention to privacy to neighbors on each side by having predominantly transom windows on each side of the building. And then additionally, the owners are planning to do some sort of landscape screening in the future. They planned already on including some landscape screening at the rear, where they've already had a new fence constructed at their cost to assist with privacy and reduce disruption to the neighbors at the rear during construction. And this morning, actually, we were made aware that there is a neighbor at 171 McHenry, so when you're facing their home, it would be the house to the left. And this morning, they voiced some concerns. I know that Christine and Bryant had already presented the project to them, but they were a little concerned about privacy. My understanding was that the privacy concerns are on the first floor, and it may be a result of the higher floor level because of the flood plain. But I know that they did discuss this, and the Bryant's and Christine have offered to provide additional screening with vegetation on that side of the home as well, to help ease that concern. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have about the project as we move forward.
All right, thank you, Ms. Costiuk. Do we have any questions for the architects?
Not seeing any hands.
All right, thank you. Well, let's see if we have any public comment. Again, for those who are attending this hearing virtually, the go-to webinar control panel in the upper right of your screen includes a hand icon. If you click on that hand icon, that will tell staff that you would like to speak in real time, and they will connect you. Each speaker is allowed three minutes, and this would be the right time to indicate your interest in speaking.
Good evening, Chair, I'm not seeing any comments at this time, but as usual, we can give it a minute or two.
All right.
I just want to say hi, Leo, because you've been helping me for years, and I've never actually seen your face.
Yeah, this is how we're allowed to see the lower half of faces.
This is the, the current life of social interaction.
All right, so I'm not hearing signs of contact.
I can confirm, Chair Riggs.
Please. All right, then, let's close the public hearing period and bring this up to the virtual DAS for comment on the project as presented. Mr. Doran, do we have any hands raised among the commissioners?
Commissioner Cale has his hand raised.
Mr. Cale?
Thank you. I'd say overall, it's, it's great, I think the height worked out well, especially given that it's in a flood zone. I want to ask a little bit about the, the, you noted as a classic craftsman, I wanted to ask a little bit about the detailing with the, sort of the woodwork and the, the windows themselves and the window trim. So I see sort of a heavy rakeboard and fascia board, but then around the windows, it's, it's sort of a very light or thin treatment. I was curious, was that a, was that a design decision?
It actually was, we did explore three and a half inch trim versus five and a half inch trim, and proportionally, the five and a half inch started to feel very heavy, and it started to feel like a chunky design. So ultimately, we felt that the three and a half inch trim was more appropriate to the scale and proportions of the project.
And what's the, what's the width of those rakeboards? Because you used the words chunky, and that seemed a little chunky to me.
I believe that they're around one foot tall, and part of the reason for that was to try to have it visually connect with the top of the windows and that trim, rather than having there be a small gap in between with a little bit of siding or shingle.
I was talking about the rakeboards, the sloping gable ends.
Oh, I understand, yeah, the fascia boards. Those, I think, we didn't really explore in too much detail on different proportions for that, this felt just a little bit compositionally like it was the best fit for the project, and also in combination with the trim boards that are above the windows. We're definitely open to some feedback on that, if that's something that, that you had strong feelings about.
I would say they're not borderline strong, I just think they're a little thick compared to, to sort of craftsmen in general. And I was going to ask about the, the beam work, I see on the sides, there's a lot of exposed beam work in the gable ends on the front, it's really just at the ridge and not at the, not at the lower ends of the eaves. Is there, I guess the question is, would you consider adding some beam work on the, to make it the same on the sides, match the sides?
Yeah, I would, and I think actually that originally there had been, I had explored doing a little bit of additional beam trim or rafter tails at the front elevation where the garage is, and because we have one side of that gable captured by the, the entry roof, it didn't feel quite as appropriate. But overall, the intent was to try to have those, when there's three rather than one, have it be in locations where there was a much wider gable expression.
I see, I would suggest that because the garage is so large, you could do a middle one as well.
At the peak of the gable?
No, halfway up the, halfway up the rake.
Okay, so sort of like it would be capturing the floor line of the, of the gable that's above?
Yes.
Yeah, I would be open to that.
Okay.
Christine Bryant, do you, do you have any feedback on that, or are you open to that as well?
Definitely, we're open to that.
Two more questions, one is typically on a crass one, I'm used to seeing some, some mud bars in the eaves or whether, or, sorry, in the windows, whether they're just at the upper half or, or throughout, is, it looks like there's no, no dividing lights at all.
Right, I think that we're kind of going for a little bit more of, it's sort of a silly phrase, but I've kind of coined it as like pottery barn chic, where you get a little bit more of a clean line approach to a classic craftsman style without having all of the divided lights. We found that particularly because a lot of the windows that are on the side of the home are transoms. We did explore actually having divided lights on the upper halves of the windows, and also on upper and bottoms of the double-hung windows. Because we do have a combination of craftsmen and double-hung for egress in the bedrooms versus the first floor, and not having it be swinging out where you'd have circulation around the building, it was a little bit difficult for it to feel cohesive and to feel like the proportions of the divided lights made sense. And so for, for this design, we opted to keep it a little bit more simple and clean line.
Okay, and my last question is about the siding, the Hardy, James Hardy siding, do you have corner boards for those? Will they be painted to match the body, or is it the thicker James Hardy siding that doesn't need corner boards?
This is the thicker James Hardy that does not require the corner boards, but I think that it would be complementary to the style if it was something that the owner was interested in pursuing.
I'm sorry, what would be complementary?
If they did want to incorporate the corner boards.
See. Well, my, my preference would be for what you're doing exactly with the thicker Hardy siding and the, and no corner boards. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Doran, do we have any other hands raised?
Not seeing any other hands.
All right, so I will jump in. I would have had a number of comments if I were working on this project, as I think any designer would. You like blue, and I like yellow and so forth. I think Mr. Cale makes some very good comments, and I would like to confirm that Ms. Costiuk is, and the owners are amenable to two or three changes. Beyond that, I have to stand in Mr. DeCarty's usual camp and note that this site is only three foot short of a legal lot, and I, I do hesitate to do anything that the, that the architect doesn't favor, for example. So if I could summarize, the trim width around the windows was a, an intentional choice. I note that you do not have a sill dividing the vertical trim from the apron, which I think would be a supportive option to this particular style. But that would only be a recommendation. You all did indicate support for rafter tails in addition to the ridge beam extension. And the window issue in terms of divided lights was intentional, it was simplicity. And I have to agree with Mr. Cale, your choice to avoid corner boards is probably a nice one. So I think the only thing I didn't make a note of resolution on was the 12-inch rakes or fascia boards. Is, is there any inclination to bring those down, or is that what you prefer, Ms. Costiuk?
I think I would be open to bringing those down. I do think that proportionally, it does sort of capture the gable with the same proportions as the, the trim that's dividing the shingle from the horizontal siding. But I, I think it's something that I would like to be able to visually explore if possible, if it's something that, that could be a recommendation rather than a condition, that would be something that's nice for us to review and see aesthetically if it's complementary to the design.
All right, heard. So I would, I'd like to go ahead and propose a motion, and that doesn't mean we're about to vote, other comments welcome. But the motion would be to approve the project with modification to the, to show rafter tails at an approximate interval of eight feet. Does that sound correct, Larry? Plus or minus four feet to work out for a logical landing place. And then, just to make a recommendation from a couple of us, I won't say from the entire commission, that you might want to reduce the depth of the rakeboards. You might want to consider a sill and apron. And I think that's it. So with just one condition, which would be the rafter tails in addition to the extended ridge beam. So do I have a second for that motion?
Commissioner Cale has his hand raised.
Mr. Cale?
Thank you, yeah, I will second the motion. You asked about the spacing of the rafter tails, if you, if you're suggesting eight feet apart, that seems rather far. I think four feet at the most would be good. I, I totally agree on the, the width of the rakeboards, that they should be a little smaller as a suggestion, and I, I love your suggestion about the, the adding the sill with the apron for the windows. I also failed to mention that I really appreciate the privacy towards the sides for the neighbors, it looks like you went through a lot of effort to do that, so always much appreciated. So with that, I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. So we do have a couple of recommendations for you that will not be part of your approval, and that will not be binding. And any comments before we vote?
Commissioner DeCarty has his hand raised.
Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I would just love to hear explicitly from the applicant, is this motion acceptable to you?
Yes, that's acceptable to us, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I did have one clarification, just about the, the beams and rafter tails. Are you looking for that to be specifically at the garage, or would you want that to be at some of the smaller gables? I think there's only one other, there's two other gables, I believe, on the second story that are a little bit smaller in their proportions. Were you looking for those, to be at those locations as well?
Mr. Cale?
I would say everywhere.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so scanning quickly here, so Ms. Maedor, is, is that one condition clear enough?
Yes, I believe so. And, well, I guess the one thing is, is you mentioned eight-foot intervals, but then Commissioner Cale mentioned four foot, so then are we going to go with the four, approximately four foot everywhere?
Yeah, approximately four feet, it's conventional. I tried to do some hasty math in my head, and I failed, you caught me.
It's late at night, we get it.
Oh, it's not late yet.
Yeah, so I think that's clear.
All right, with that, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of the motion on the table? Um, all in favor of the motion on the table? Oh, do we have a second? Yes, Larry Kale. Um, yeah, all in favor? Please, uh, oh, I'll just, uh, call out as I did before. So, Mr. DeCarty?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Yes.
And Mr. Kale?
Yes.
Ms. Tate?
Yes.
All right, and I am in favor. So, once again, for those five commissioners present, we have the unanimous approval with Mr. Barnes and Ms. Kennedy absent tonight.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and consideration this evening. It's a pleasure to meet you all online.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work on your project.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes that item. And our next project, item F3, is a use permit. Applicant Mashid Sadat at 575 Olive Street. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family, excuse me, residence and construct a new two-story residence with a basement on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1S Single Family Suburban Residential Zoning District. Ms. Khan, welcome. Do you have any updates on the project description?
Good evening, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. Staff does not have any updates on the project or staff report at this time, but staff is available to answer any questions. So, is the applicant and homeowner?
All right, very good. So, uh, let's go right into a presentation, I think, if the, uh, if the applicant would like to do that.
Mr. DeCarty has his hand raised.
Yeah, Mr. DeCarty?
Thank you. I just have a brief clarification question. Ms. Khan, on the Arborist Report and Tree Number 10, which is the Heritage Oak in poor form, can you remind me about this, this process? Has this already been resolved with the community and gone through the Environmental Quality Commission? And so, we're done with this? Or, um, is that tree still, um, have the potential for a neighbor to raise a concern or want to keep it?
So, uh, Tree Number 10 had, has been applied for the heritage tree removal. The city arborist has reviewed the arborist's report, uh, and has approved the removal of the tree. The appeal, the 15-day appeal period has also been completed at this time.
So it's done then at this point? Is that correct? Um, and the, the replacement is met by this project, the, the appropriate, I think it's two for one, is that right?
Um, it is, uh, one for one, given that it's due to the removal for the health and not the development. And, uh, the location that has been proposed at this time is interfering with the drip line of Tree Number 11. And we have, uh, kind of been in conversation with the city arborist and he believes that it should be relocated to prevent any sort of damage to Tree Number 11 and the fence as well as the neighbor's property.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other hands raised, Mr. Doran?
There are not.
Okay, um, so, let's go ahead. If the applicant would like to speak to the project, this would be the time.
Uh, sure. Good evening. My name is Mashid Sadat. My husband and I would like to make, um, uh, this house our forever home. Uh, the existing house, uh, is a, um, kind of Eichler style, but of course not built by Eichler. Uh, it's a, um, uh, one-story, 1,620 square feet. And, uh, it was built in 1952. The layout is, um, very difficult to work with. There are a lot of, um, issues with the, um, plumbing. We had to remove all the plumbing or at least replace the plumbing and reroute them through the roof. Uh, because otherwise, we had to, um, take all the concrete slab out and, um, replace the, uh, pipes. So that's an example of how in bad a shape this house is. Of course, we don't need a big house, but the basement is a bonus, so we decided to have the basement. Uh, other than that, uh, we have one child who, um, doesn't live in California, but our hope is when she visits with her future family and so forth, we'll have room. We, um, lived in East Coast for a long time, so we are used to having a lot of space. So, we need rooms for hobby, exercise room and so forth. Um, the style of the home that we are proposing is a modern farmhouse, a two-story. We designed it such that the massing, uh, is proportional with the setbacks, especially on both sides and some front. There's a covered porch in the front that, um, adds to the, um, visual, um, kind of, um, appearance of the house and also, um, avoids a tall, you know, one-piece front. We have, um, more setbacks on the side. Uh, there's a master bedroom on the second floor and two additional bedrooms. And we have done the neighborhood outreach in view of COVID. Um, it was in the form of, uh, either email, uh, sending letters or running into our neighbors in the street as we were walking and having a chat with them. Uh, as far as the, uh, special material goes, um, we have proposed a battened board front and, um, we like the combination of material. We have seen a lot of houses with similar look and feel uh, within half a mile of our house, which have, um, a combination of like battened board or even siding and stucco. So we, um, propose, uh, battened board for the front and part of the side and then very strategically change that to stucco towards the back. We really like that look. And also it helps with the durability of wood on the south side, which is the back of the house when it's exposed to sun all the time. Uh, as far as the tree, uh, and the, um, heritage trees go, the tree that's, uh, we got the permit to remove, um, is a, uh, it's a live oak and the body of it is a shape of an S. It's very unstable and will not thrive in its location. Um, we can modify the location of the new tree that we propose to plant to, um, whatever requirements that the city arborist has. Other than that, it's a two-car garage and, um, the, um, uh, material is selected based on some of the, um, houses that are already in the neighborhood. New buildings with, um, charcoal, uh, color aluminum clad windows and, um, with divided light, uh, sections. Most of the windows are casement, um, with a few in the form of like awning type window. Uh, if you have any questions, um, I'm ready to answer and, uh, our planner or, or designer is also available.
All right, thank you. So do we have any initial questions before we go to public comment on the project?
Not seeing any hands raised.
All right, so let's go ahead and invite public comment. Um, for those who are attending virtually, um, this project is 575 Olive. And if you would like to comment on the project, look to the right side of your screen for the hand icon. Um, I believe it's attached to the side of the GoToWebinar control panel. If you click on that icon, that will directly tell staff that you would like to speak on this project. We invite the public to speak for up to three minutes. And this is your opportunity for this project.
Do you have any chair?
Mr. Tapia?
Yes, so at this time, I am not seeing any comments, but as usual, we can give it a minute or two, see if any come through.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Tapia confirms.
Yes, I can confirm, Chair. No comments.
All right, then we will close the public comment period. And bring it up to the virtual DS for comments and, um, questions and so forth regarding the project. Mr. Doran, do we have any hands raised?
Mr. Kale has his hand raised.
Mr. Kale?
Thank you. Um, I really just have one question and then a few comments. And the question is, uh, why are there two different roof materials per floor? And if I understand right, there's two different roof pitches too. The, the lower floor is a three and 12 and the upper floor is a four and 12.
Uh, the material choice was based on, again, um, we saw some of the houses around our neighborhood. We liked it and we just copied the style. And, uh, the lower pitches, because a lot of metal is used in the lower area, especially the parts that can be seen. We didn't want to make that transition in an area like from, uh, metal to, um, asphalt shingles in an area that can be seen. So we kind of strategically placed it as it wraps around a particular portion. As far as the roof pitch, um, I think that was part of the design to make sure the, um, slopes and the, um, uh, at least symmetrical aspect of the design matches.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I just have a few comments then. I saw that the neighbors had some problems with the driveway and the privacy and stuff and I, I don't really see, uh, really the merits to those issues. So, I'm just gonna talk about the design itself. Um,
Mr. Kale, I'm glad you brought it up. The two comments about, um, driveway and adequacy of parking as well as the fact that a basement would, um, cause flooding in the neighborhood. Uh, these two comments were raised in multiple other projects that went through use permit. The same neighbors brought up the same, uh, issues. They got their answer and they keep, uh, you know, pushing those issues.
Um, we understand. If you would be good enough, if you would, um, like to speak, so indicate with your hand raised if you're on screen or using the chat button. That helps us keep the flow of questions.
Like that?
You might, uh, Mr. Doran, is there?
Yeah.
All right, great. And, and you might not know that we also are aware of certain comments that have been resolved or even long resolved on previous, uh, permit discussions. So, I wouldn't be too worried that we'll go astray. Um, Mr. Kale, please continue.
Thank you. Um, so the, I guess the, I did have an issue with the siding changing to stucco. Um, I understand the explanation about, um, the, the, the solar exposure at the back. Um, it's not my preference, but I think it's well done in that it transitions well. Um, and you don't really see it from the front. I think the, uh, the garage is rather prominent. It sits out pretty far away from the rest of the house, but that is mitigated somewhat by the, the large, um, entry ports. I think that helps. My, my only real main issue is with the different roof materials. I think that's a mistake. I think it should be, as we talked about in, in the past in other projects, it should be all one material, uh, top and bottom. Uh, I, I'd really like to see the roof pitches to be the same as well. Um, but of, of all these issues, I think the main one is just the, the roof materials need to be consistent. Um, that's my opinion. Thank you, Chair.
All right, um, Mr. Doran, any other, um, commissioners wishing to speak?
Not seeing any hands.
All right, well, maybe because it's, um, overall, um, thoughtful proportions and, um, the street frontage at least has nice materials. I have to confess, when I saw this, I flipped back to check that this wasn't a stucco addition to an existing farmhouse, um, where the funding for the addition was not, uh, equal to the original project. I wouldn't do this myself, but, um, this, this particular design, uh, this occurs on a lot, uh, that is a good-sized lot and is awfully close to a legal lot. So, um, that's just another reason why I would hesitate to speak. I would like to ask some, uh, clarification. Do you want any mullions on the windows? Because it seems to imply that there are mullions with a single line in the front windows, single horizontal and a single vertical, which would be consistent with farmhouse style. And if that's the case, can you describe the window mullion type?
Uh, the applicant has her hand raised.
Uh, yes, please. I'm sorry, I should have said that, uh, I'm, I'm asking for a response from the applicant. Thank you.
What was the word you used, the, for the divided, uh, window pane?
Oh, it's, it's some, uh,
Molya?
Non sequitur, non sequitur, like true simulated true divided light. Meaning that there are metal bars, um, dividing the panes between the glass as well as the surface treatment inside and outside.
Uh, the section that has the, um, in the middle, it shows there are two casements that would open. The, um,
Right, but whether they're casement or, or double hung, divided lights means that the glass in any casement is separated into two pieces, four pieces, six pieces for a traditional look. Uh, is your architect present to speak to this?
Yes, actually, sorry, I had some difficulties with my, um, voice and camera, so that's why I'm kind of cutting off. And, um, the halley on it's because of the windows are casements and there are some simulated, um, dividers, um, that, um, it needs to be there because of the style of the window that we're using.
Right, I agree. And so my question tonight is, are they what is called simulated true divided light? Meaning that there's a, uh, dividers on the outside, dividers on the interior, and then dividers that are placed between the glass layers so that when a passerby looks at the windows, they don't peek through between the two layers and say, aha, fake windows.
Yes, they are simulated. Yes, you're right.
Oh, very good. All right, thank you. And I, I quite agree with Mr. Kale. I think your project would be more handsome and in the long run will look higher quality if you have standing seam metal roof on the top as well as the lower. Um, plus standing seam metal roof lasts quite a bit longer. Um, I, I had to chuckle when one applicant said that they were afraid they would hear raindrops on the metal roof. Um, I've never actually heard that that occurs. But, um, I'm inclined to strongly encourage you to consider upgrading your roofing at the second floor. And to make note here in this hearing that that would be And to make note here in this hearing that that would be considered approved by the discussion tonight. And and I think, I think that's it. I'd also like to note that your architect did quite an extensive submittal. It certainly answers all questions and it makes it very easy for us to review all elements of the project. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have comments or would like to make a motion?
Mr. DeCarty has his hand raised.
Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, I move that we approve the project as submitted.
I'd like to raise my hand.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second as submitted. Let me, while I make, yes?
Yeah, I actually had not seconded the motion. I was raising my own hand so I could speak to it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
But I was going to second it. I just wanted to get that properly on the records for the minutes. I'd like to second the motion. Ms. Khan has her hand raised.
Ms. Khan, yes.
Yes, if I may, Chair, before you make the motion for the project, if you would consider the materials that were mentioned, materials were not finalized. There were two options for materials for a few of the items, if you wanted to make a notion of that as well.
Did this have to do with the siding?
Also the window trim. Window trim and the front door as well as the garage door.
Oh, right, that were either wood or metal.
Correct.
Right, and so I'll ask the maker whether he would like to put any conditions on the alternatives of entry door and garage door.
Not between those. I'm happy to leave those up to the applicant.
All right, and I will note we have a very positive garage door image on the application sheet MB 1.0 as well as the entry door. And Ms. Khan, have you pointed out that a significant deviation from those images would require at least review by the commission members?
No, but it would be good to have a confirmation as to which material they would be choosing.
All right, well, I will ask then, Ms. Sadat, would you like to make a decision at this point whether you're going with the two major doors as metal or wood?
If I may add this comment, the metal or wood option that we mentioned in the material board description was not to depart from a certain look that we showed. Some metal doors, entry doors, actually you cannot tell they're metal, but it's solid. That's what we wanted to show. Some garage doors are made of fiberglass that imitate wood and they're filled with some insulating material. We haven't picked the actual manufacturer of the garage door, but I've looked at some of them and it doesn't, the only thing is the look would be the same. Depending on the manufacturer, yeah, it would maybe be metal or wood.
All right, so it would be, for example, on the garage door, it would be a craftsman inspired flat panel door even if it's metal.
Precisely.
All right. Ms. Khan, I don't have a problem with that. So let me briefly canvas other commission members whether they feel that the material choice needs to be made at this time. Mr. Doran, any comments?
Not seeing any hands raised. Commissioner DeCarty is shaking his head.
All right, Ms. Khan, if it's not too bold, given the request from planning staff, I don't, I don't see an inclination from the commission members to press that choice as long as the appearance is as indicated on sheet MB 1.0, which the architect just confirmed.
That is okay with staff.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and second on the table. Lacking any sign of any other comments, Mr. Doran.
Nope, no hands raised.
And I'm sorry, who's, who is our second?
That was me.
All right. So yes, I should remember because it was a detailed one. So I call for the vote. Mr. DeCarty?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Doran?
I think it's a very attractive project and I'm happy to vote yes.
Mr. Cale?
Yes.
Ms. Tate?
Yes.
All right, and I vote in favor as well. So again, for those commission members present, we have a unanimous approval, in this case with no conditions. And Mr. Barnes and Ms. Kennedy absent. Congratulations and good luck with your house project.
Thank you all. I really appreciate it. I also want to thank Ms. Khan, who was very instrumental in leading us to make such a complete submission.
As an architect, I will say that there are times when I would much prefer that we didn't ask for a submission quite so complete. But you all responded very well and should be credited with that. So again, thank you. All right, good night. And with that, we move to our final public hearing item. This is item F4, a development agreement annual review for the Stanford University project known as 500 El Camino Real or Middle Plaza at 500 El Camino Real. This is the annual review of the property owner's good faith compliance with the terms of the development agreement. And Corinna, do we have a presentation? Of course, we've all had the staff report.
Yeah, there's no updates to the staff report. I believe the applicant will give a brief verbal update, but there's no formal presentation.
All right, and who do we have representing the applicant tonight?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is John Donahoe of Stanford University. And also with me is, are available tonight is Nick Durham with Stanford University's Department of Project Management. We don't have anything to add to the staff report. The project, the development agreement itself is relatively simple as development agreements go. And so we're at the stage now of, we're in a construction phase so that elements that of the development agreement that were required prior to the initiation of construction has been met. And some of the next items in the development agreement will start to be triggered upon occupancy of the project itself.
Understood. All right. Well, that said, are there any questions prior to the presentation from our commission members?
No hands raised.
All right, thank you. So let's move ahead with a presentation brief or otherwise, if there is any, or was that it?
That was it from Stanford's perspective.
All right, thank you, Mr. Donahoe. We will go to public comment. At this time, if you would like to speak on the project at hand, Middle Plaza, El Camino, basically across from Safeway, this is the time where on your screen you would click the hand icon that is appended to the go-to webinar control panel. This will tell staff in real time that you would like to speak. And we give all comers three minutes to speak on a project. And we will give maybe a minute for an opportunity for you to run back to the computer from the kitchen and click on the hand icon.
Good evening, Chair and members of the public. It looks like we do have a comment at this time. And with your permission, Chair, I would like to introduce him.
Please.
Okay, so forgive me if I'm mispronouncing this, but Jaya Pancholi, you should have the ability to activate your microphone.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
So this is Ranjit Pancholi. I'm Jaya's husband. We are the people across from this project at 115 El Camino Real. And we are very delighted to see this progress on the project and we are looking forward for completion of this one. And we are, of course, as you know, we are in the reconstruction more ourselves. We will be coming up for the hearing, final review by the committee in the next meeting or two meetings from now. But thanks again for giving opportunity to talk about it. This is wonderful, wonderful upgrade to the old facilities of the auto lane that we used to have. So thank you very much. Bye-bye.
All right, thank you very much, sir. So Mr. Tapia, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we do, Chair. I'm going to go ahead and introduce the next speaker. It's going to be Kim Novello. You should have the ability to activate your microphone now.
Good evening. I hope you all can hear me okay. My internet is lousy. Thank you for the thumbs up. I have to apologize, I'm not fully informed. I have seen the development. I live just on the, near Burgess Park, so on the other side of the train tracks. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have mentioned in the past, I've been concerned about the new heights that has, have been getting approved. I know that the old car lots weren't the most attractive thing. And so my request in speaking at this point, I know obviously a construction is well underway, is if there are any modifications in the future to allow for just any kind of green space, yard space, outdoor space, even a sightline from Middle Avenue. I was walking down Middle Avenue past the Safeway entry the other day and looking straight ahead at where the new construction will be or is being built. And just wondering about the trees and the view of the trees. And so any kind of nature you can make visible for the rest of us living here, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
You're welcome. And Mr. Tapia, any other speakers?
At this time, Chair, I can confirm there are no other public comments.
All right, let's give it 10 seconds in case someone had assumed that was going to be a three-minute comment. All right, and with that, I'll close public comments and bring it back for the commission to discuss the property owner's good faith compliance with the terms of the VA. Any commissioners like to speak on the subject?
Mr. DeCarty has his hand raised.
Mr. DeCarty.
First of all, just to thank you for being here and for waiting a couple hours in order to make the presentation on your progress. Appreciate it. And recognize your trusted companion with you there in your screen. It's nice to see a dog in our meetings. This is actually a question for staff. On the underpass, which in the development agreement Stanford will trigger paying, it looks like half of it, can you remind us where the rest of the funding will come from? And if that funding has already been earmarked? Or what those steps will be in the future so that the underpass is fully funded and built as quickly as possible? I know that that was a big issue and one that was very important for the community. So want to understand where we are, given where Stanford is in their progress, where we are in the other half of the funding and how that works.
I believe Public Works is working on the, going through those steps of getting the necessary permissions from the other property owners and getting the funding secured. I don't have details on that information, but I know they're working towards the timeline outlined in the staff report.
And do you, do you know where that funding source comes from? Or is that something that you just, it's not, I don't, it's not a massive concern if you don't know off the top of your head, but I would be interested in a quick follow-up maybe.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get back to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Sandoval.
For the Chair, this is John Donahoe. I have been asked by the Public Works Department to actually write several letters on behalf of Stanford in support of funding. So I know that they are pursuing a variety of funding sources. It won't be just one source. So, and I know that work has been ongoing over the last year. Thank you.
I will also add that, as I recall, part of the deal was that I believe it was Caltrain funds were going to be designated for this underpass if and when we were able to approve it by a certain deadline in 20, I believe it was 2019. And that plan was approved by that date. So I believe that there are bond funds that are set aside, perhaps not enough to cover the other 50% as you questioned, Mr. DeCarty. But there has been funding anchored as, as part of this effort since actually the effort was begun in 2017, I believe. So we can hope all the pieces fall together. Other, other questions?
Not seeing any hands.
All right. I have to say, it's hardly a surprise. Stanford is, to Menlo Park, pretty much a good neighbor. And this project in particular, in my opinion, is as much a contribution to the city of Menlo Park as it is a new asset for Stanford. And a great deal of thought and consideration for the city's hopes for El Camino Real was put into this project over the years. And a great deal of patience was also shown. And no doubt, there will be some more. And it's, I think it's clear from the staff report that good faith has been demonstrated. I can't help but note that it's almost an irony because this project has been in many ways, good faith from its inception, in my opinion. So, Ms. Sandoval, do we simply need a formal recommendation to City Council at this point?
Yeah, so the recommended action Yes, so the recommended action is outlined in Attachment A. So that's to make a finding that Stanford University is in compliance with the provisions of the approved development agreement for the period of February 2020 through February 2021. So it's the regular process of someone making a motion, a second, and then a vote.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to move that we make the finding in the attachment.
All right, so Mr. Doran, Mr. Doran moves approval. Do we have a second? Or moves to make the finding?
Kail has his hand raised.
All right, Mr. Kail, it's our second. I think with that, we should proceed with the vote. So I will start again with Mr. DeCarty.
Yes.
And Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mr. Kail?
Yes.
Ms. Tate?
Yes.
And I am in favor. So the vote is 5-0 of those members present with Commissioners Barnes and Kennedy absent. Thank you to Stanford. See you next year.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearing section of the meeting, and we move on to regular business. One of these days, I will ask how we decide to name these two sections, but not tonight. So Item G1 is the Housing Annual, Housing Element Annual Report for the city of Menlo, the city of Menlo Park being the applicant, so to speak. And this is the Commission's opportunity to consider and provide comments and/or recommendation to the City Council on the 2020 Annual Report on the Status and Implication of the City's Housing Element, 2015 to 2023. Is it Mr. Turner we, we see tonight?
Ms. Tate has her hand raised.
Chair Riggs, I'm not sure if this is the point that I need to leave the meeting. It is almost nine o'clock. And if I'm not mistaken, if I, if I start, then I have to finish for your quorum. Is that right?
You wouldn't have to finish, but your vote would no longer be available.
Okay.
You can participate and ask questions in the next five minutes, if you wish, or it would be quite understandable if you felt that five minutes was not much of a participation and would like to get to your other responsibilities.
Okay.
Mr. Kail has his hand raised.
Yeah, Mr. Kail.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is just me, but when I click on the link to this item, it's, you have to zoom in and it's almost unreadable. It's very fuzzy to me. Is it, does anyone else have this issue?
When I clicked on it, it was very small, but I blew it up to 150% and it's still clear. So I didn't get the fuzziness.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the project? Or about our designation to make comments on our report? All right, so again, is it Mr. Turner who will represent this to us tonight?
Good evening Chair Riggs and Commissioners. It's actually myself and Mike Nocce from our Housing Division. Mike Nocce is going to start us off with a presentation.
Okay.
All right, thank you Commissioners and thank you Chris. Good evening Chair Riggs and Planning Commissioners. Just want to get the presentation launched here. And I will move as quickly as possible. We just have a few slides for you this evening, really meant to be a brief overview of the Housing Element, the 2020 Housing Element, also referred to as the APR, Annual Progress Report for the 2020 calendar year. I will go into some very quick background, some summary of current, of the housing production numbers, and then some milestones that were also included in the report. And just really quickly before I begin, just in regards to the, the staff report and Commissioner Kail's comment on the Excel document, we would, we would love for that to be different. That's unfortunately what we received from the Department of Housing Community Development at the state level. So we don't necessarily have a choice on, on how that gets presented. But we do our best to, to include all the information as best possible. But yeah, definitely apologize that the, the formatting there can't be changed. That being said, the Housing Element is a requirement in California, part of state law, which has been required since 1969. Over the past five decades, there've been cycles and updates that identify housing needs for regions all over California. Currently, we are in our fifth cycle, which runs from 2015 to 2023. The specific housing production figures for each region in California are identified in the RENA process, which is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. The allocation from Menlo Park for that cycle, which is 2015 to 2023, is 655 dwelling units. This is determined by the, by HCD, which I previously mentioned, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, in association with the Association of Bay Area Governments, also referred to as A-BAG. The Annual Progress Report is required to be submitted on April 1st of every year. And that is for the calendar year that, that previous to the year that we're currently in. So the year that we're reviewing currently is the 2020 calendar year. And next, I'm going to hand it over to Chris, and he'll give some updates in regards to our housing production.
Yes, so many of you have seen this before. So as a refresher, the APR tracks the life cycle of housing permits from entitlement to building permit issuance, all the way through certificate of occupancy, or in the case of Menlo Park, we use final inspection as that certificate of occupancy or the completion of the project. This year, we are counting 256 net new dwelling units towards our RENA numbers. Keep in mind that the APR only counts building permits issued for any given year, usually because when building permits are issued, it's a good indication that the, the project's going to be built, rather than counting it at the entitlement stage, for example. The majority of the dwelling units from this past year come from the 500 El Camino Real Middle Plaza Project, where there were permits issued for 215 net new units, including eight BMR units. Then the majority of the rest of the units come from 1540 El Camino Real, which was 27 units with five BMR units included in that project. Menlo Park continues to be one of only 30 jurisdictions exempt from SB 35, which allows for streamlining of certain housing projects if they provide a certain proportion of affordable units. But since we're exempt, this is an indication that we are meeting our RENA obligations from the state. This past year, we had 13 building permits issued for ADUs, which is an increase of nine over our 2019 numbers for ADUs. And this is likely due to new state ADU laws that went into effect in January of 2020, which aimed at relaxing zoning regulations and streamlining AD permitting. If we go to the next slide. So this, this chart shows the progress towards our RENA numbers for the cycle. We were, as Mike said, assigned 655 units, which are broken down into very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income brackets. To date, we have achieved 63.5% of our very low numbers, 62% of our low income numbers, which is 20% closer than last year. 2019, we're at 42%. And, and 7% of our moderate. And as you can see, we are well above our, above moderate and, and total housing allocation. So as you know, we, we do have a number of large housing projects in the pipeline, which are not included in this year's report, because they have not received entitlements or building permits. But I do think it's, it's good to note, we do, we did receive building permit applications for the Mid Penn Housing Project at 1345 Willow Road, which will be 140 total units with 58 net new units at 100% affordable rates. So hopefully, we'll be looking forward to including those in next year's report.
All right.
And just a couple more slides to share with you. So the Housing Element APR Program also, or Annual Report, rather, excuse me, does include, which will be found in Table D of, of the attachment to the staff report. It does include milestones that we capture throughout the year. Just a couple highlights to share. In September 2020, this is related to the project that Chris just mentioned on the 1300 Road of Willow, which is the Mid Penn Project. City Council approved an increase in funding. So the total funding from the city, and this funding comes from the BMR Housing Fund, which is all related to development dollars that come in. Excuse my cursor there. The project itself, as Chris mentioned, will be a total of 140 units and 58 net new BMR. In November of 2020, also related to the BMR Housing Fund, we released a Notice of Funding Availability, which was for $10 million. We, the city received three proposals, one of which was already approved by City Council. The reason we moved so quickly on that one was related to the acquisition of real estate, 68 Coleman and Place, and that'll be 14 low-income units. That will be added to the inventory of the city. Also, that we've also highlighted in the report is the Homeless Outreach Team, who did a tremendous job, has done tremendous job over the last couple of years, which has made it consist of staff from our Housing Division, Police Department, and then also local nonprofits. We worked very closely with Life Moves, which is a local nonprofit specializing in homeless outreach and services. Recently, we've, over the past year, we've, we've coordinated services out along the Bayfront Expressway. There was a large homeless encampment in that area. As of February 2021, the campment is down to about six individuals. I don't have the exact numbers, but I know a, a number of folks did move into programs. Others chose not to accept the assistance and did move on to another location. But that is, is a constant challenge when working with the, that population. But we, we do work closely with Caltrans and other nonprofits such as Hart Samaritan House and Hip Housing, to hopefully provide as many services as possible, and, and just provide housing stability in general to that population with homeless outreach. As far as grant funding that was awarded to the city, this is staff pursued in 2020 and was awarded, which was the SB 2 Planning Grant Program. As you see, $160,000 was awarded to the city. This will be the work as far as encouraging ADU development and then potential zoning amendments. That will, work will hopefully be commencing in 2021. The LEAP Grant, which is the local early action planning grant, that awarded for $150,000, and that'll help the city, which gets into my next slide, prepare for the sixth cycle of our RENA. And one moment. Sorry, my slide's not advancing for us. Vaughn, would you be able to advance the slide? For some reason, my computer's not allowing me to. Thank you. So just looking ahead at what's to come, as Chris mentioned, there is a lot in the development pipeline. As many of you know, have reviewed those projects. We're also preparing for our next Housing Element cycle. And I know there will be two Planning Commissioners on the panel, which will be interviewing consulting firms that'll be assisting the city in the preparation for the next Housing Element. And then the lead firm will basically run point on the progress on how that update moves forward. One key thing to note about the sixth cycle of the RENA is that we're expecting 3,000 units, potentially that'll be allocated for just Menlo Park. San Mateo County as a whole is roughly 47,688. So that'll be some, some pretty large numbers. And we'll, we'll be looking into that more when we go to that, get into that process. So at this time, staff will remain available for any questions that you might have. And we'll also record any general comments from the Commission that we will then, in part, share with the City Council when the report goes to City Council in a week or two. And with that, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you Mike. Thank you Mike. So as with other elements, I believe, I mean with other projects, it's appropriate to call for public comment. Corinna, correct me if I'm wrong. So at this point, we are discussing Item G1 under Regular Business, the Housing Element Annual Report, which is prepared by engineering and planning and offered to the City Council, indicating how well we are doing in response to our Housing Element, the outline in our general plan that indicates housing that we should encourage. If you would like to speak in some way on the subject, you are invited at this time. Again, the go-to meeting control panel on the right, upper right of your screen has a hand icon. I believe it's a green hand icon. If you click on that, you will in real time indicate to staff that you would like to speak on the subject. And we invite speakers for up to three minutes. And this would be the time to make comment on this item. So Mr. Tapia, do we show any interest at this point?
Yes. Good evening Chair and members of the public. At this time, I am showing two comments. So I'll go ahead and introduce those as they came in. With your permission, I would like to introduce the first public speaker.
Please.
Okay, so Lauren Bigelow, you should have the ability to activate your microphone.
Good evening Planning Commissioners and happy International Women's Day. My name is Lauren Bigelow, and I am here tonight representing the Housing Commission to share our observations and reflections on the Housing Element Annual Progress Report with you. When examining the production serving various income tiers, it's clear that Menlo Park is producing a large amount of housing units that will be affordable to above moderate income earners, and are, and are producing very low and low-income units. We are far behind in production of moderate income units, but that seems to be a common situation across the region and is likely connected to the way income limits and funding sources collide. and is likely connected to the way income limits and funding sources collide. In terms of policies and processes, our city has significantly improved our homelessness prevention and outreach outcomes. We've done that by participating in partnerships and dedicating steady and patient outreach with our homeless population to build trust. It's a lot of work, and we want to acknowledge Rhonda in particular for her efforts. That being said, though, the number one cause of homelessness is eviction. And those that are at the highest risk for eviction and homelessness are those that have household incomes well under that above moderate level, whose housing units we are producing at a fraction of the above moderate housing units. This is a problem for the entire community, particularly given the public health risk that the homeless population faces during pandemic times. The easiest and most cost-effective way to deal with homelessness is to stop people from becoming homeless rather than trying to serve them once they're already on the streets. This is known. If we want to protect our community, we have to do a better job producing those units that are at steep levels of affordability. Currently, the majority of the units that are affordable are through our Market Rate Inclusionary Program, and those units are a better fit for low-income households at the higher end of the range and not those in the very low or extremely low income tiers. This points to the importance of dedicating land near transit to projects that are majority affordable housing and can draw on tax credit financing as we go forward. Thank you, and I hope that our reflections are helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Bigelow. Definitely. In fact, I will have a question for staff following up. But first, Mr. Tapia, you have a second comment.
Yes, at this time, I would like to introduce Kim Novello. You should have the ability now, Kim, to activate your microphone.
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you all again. So I had a couple of thoughts come to mind. I apologize for not being fully versed on all of this. I'm a single parent and do my best to show up when I can. I'm curious how, I was curious how the numbers are determined for the number of very low, low, moderate, and above moderate units. And also, I'm wondering if there's any discussion in any way at the state, local, or other level or forums on the impact of these units. I'm very concerned about the expected units, the 3,000 expected for the next cycle and the 47,000 plus expected for San Mateo County. As a long-term resident, my entire life, actually, on this peninsula, those numbers scare me. And I'm, I'm learning as I'm trying to gain information that I need to speak about my situation. Although I am a no-income person right now, which no one even talks about, and COVID is helping with my rental protection, I am concerned about my mental health just based on the housing that's being built and the number of people that are here. And I also hear arguments for housing near transit. Yet I wonder why we don't build housing near jobs. And I think it'd be nice to have a focus more on having people work in the towns they live in. And if there's a way we can kind of promote that, I would appreciate it. And also, just the more people, the more housing, please, 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 please. The more open space nature for all our mental health. Me personally, I need to be able to go on walks in nature. Today, I had a lovely walk along the train tracks on Alma and around across over into Palo Alto through El Palo Alto Park, and then along the creek until unfortunately I hit the bridge to come back over to the Menlo Park side, and it was all housing. So I turned around and went back the other way. But I just can only speak for myself at this point. I need a place to be able to walk, and I'm concerned with the underpass, which I just kind of understood to be happening tonight, that maybe my nature path is also going to get cut in half. But please consider the impact that all of this is having on the current residents. And we hear people talk about a looney, but please consider us natives as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Novello. So, Mr. Tapia, do we have any more speakers?
At this time, Chair, I'm not seeing any other speakers in the queue.
All right, then, especially given the hour, let's close public comment. And as we bring it back up to the DS, I do have a couple of questions for staff. One is, Ms. Bigelow made the comment that the top issue for homelessness is evictions. She didn't specify and may have been indicating evictions from 2019. But am I correct that there are currently county and local laws that are essentially blocking evictions for inability to pay due to coronavirus?
If I, if I may, Chair, Mike Noche with the Housing Division. So to answer that question, I know it is a complex in regards to, you know, what causes homelessness and definitely agree with Commissioner Bigelow, one of our housing commissioners. As far as eviction protection, there, there is current laws regarding tenant evictions on residential property. I know you didn't ask for commercial, but the commercial eviction, just in case it comes up, did expire months ago.
Regarding storefronts, restaurants, and so forth?
That would be correct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's not, there's no way to cover everything. And we know there are people who are hit out there. See if I can find my other question. Oh, yes, I, I just wanted to indicate to Ms. Novello, although not, not all green space is as adjacent as we would like it to be. We do have a habit at the Planning Commission of asking for open space in major projects. And congratulations for living near Burgess Park. I rather wish I did as well. But notable for extended walks would be complete completion in the last year and a half of several segments of the Bay Trail. And when I've been out there, I've found that I have near solitude as well as quite an impressive location. And I hope everyone can step up their use of that more than, it's a multi-county-wide facility. So I don't have any other comments. Does, does anyone else on the commission want to comment on the, on this report?
Mr. DeCarty has his hand raised.
Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Riggs, and thank you, staff. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your hard work and putting this all together and presented to us. Mr. Noche, I think these are two questions for you. The first one is, Menlo Park is certified as being on track to meet the targets that have been given to us by the state in this fifth round. How do they do that certification? Is that annual or how are they, how frequently are they certifying that we're on track? How does that work?
So I've eliminated understanding for SB 35. I'd have to do a little more analysis, but my understanding is that it is an annual process that they are, they're taking a look at on, on the state level. I believe it's HCD who makes that determination. So last year, just offhand, I'm pretty sure it was 28 jurisdictions. And I believe two jurisdictions must have brought their numbers up in production as far as what would be counted in the previous year's cycles or previous year's report, excuse me. So, so now we're at 30 jurisdictions total with Menlo Park being one of them. There's 25 cities and one county, and five counties.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And then my follow-up question is on the table on progress that you showed, which in our materials was A3. And as Commissioner Bigelow noted, you noted as well. So just doing the math, if we're 60% of the way through this period and we're over 60% on meeting the very low and low, but we're well short on moderate, what happens at the end of this if we don't meet the moderate target? What's the repercussion?
Great, great question. And that was a, a similar question was asked at the Housing Commission meeting last week. So technically SB 35, to our understanding, is the only kind of, you know, consequence necessarily for a city or to entice cities to stay on track. So right now, the state hasn't identified a, a process that would penalize a city for, for not meeting their, their goals other than SB 35 as far as, as far as we're aware.
And SB 35, just as a mandated streamlining, would that, would that look like the current ADU regulation that, that we're now, or something along those lines?
I, I believe it would, and I'm not a legal expert in all this, but I believe it has a little more similarity to SB 330 projects that if they have a certain, they reach a certain threshold in regards to a number of BMR units or so forth. And I see Chris hopped on, so maybe he has a little more info to add, then they would streamline. But essentially, both are streamlining legislation, related legislation rather. And Chris, feel free to add.
Yeah, if I, I may add, SB 35 goes even a step further than SB 330 in streamlining as, depending on what bracket you're in and the percentage of BMR units in housing development. It, it could be a situation where the housing development is not subject to any discretionary review. It's just a, a by right development. So it would completely bypass, you know, a use permit or architectural control reviewed by the Planning Commission or our City Council.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Turner, Mr. Noche. I appreciate it. I think the report, and you asked Chair Riggs for comments, just a few comments on this. The first one is to Ms. Bigelow, thank you for coming. I find it extraordinarily helpful. Anytime a representative of the Housing Commission comes to the Planning Commission with your perspective, I learn something each time. And, and just, just please, an open invitation on any of our items. We'd love to hear from you with your insights. And so thank you for making the time this evening. I said this before, but to staff, thank you for your hard work on making this happen and for your work on the projects that we see and on the progress that we're making. And then I think the last comment that I would make on, from my perspective, and as a planning commissioner and for our City Council, is that these targets that are coming from the state, and they are important and they are something for us to focus on, what you focus on, you end up doing. If we didn't have targets, I, you know, intellectually curious about how much progress we would be making. On the other hand, I would point out that this works the other way, which is these targets are in no way indicative of the need in our community, and the need is extraordinarily higher than these targets. You can imagine for all sorts of reasons, including these targets were set, considered about a decade ago, which was on the heels of the Great Recession. And so I think it's just really important to put a pin in it for us in the Planning Commission, for the Housing Commission, and for the City Council, that while we take a look at the progress on building housing for all income levels, that the disconnect between the need and what these levels are is huge. And it means that we've got a lot of work ahead of us. And as Mr. Noche pointed out, we're likely to have a four or five-fold increase anyway next time around. Would just encourage us all to redouble our efforts and think about ways that we can start moving now, knowing we need, the need, and also what this greater target is going to be in the future. That would be my main comment. And thank you for the time and the presentation this evening.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
No hands.
All right, thank you. I have to say that I'm rather impressed with either the good fortune of Menlo Park drawing these projects or just as likely the good management of our city in order to draw them in and, most importantly, make them happen. So this is a nice kind of a report to hear, even if, as Mr. DeCarty points out, we still need more in the region. That is, has yet to be resolved. At this point, I'd like to call for a motion whether we can make the findings, I'm sorry, whether, well, tell me, Mr. Noche, at this point, is, are we simply being asked to make general individual comments rather than a motion?
Thank you, Chair Riggs. So the, what we are after is, is some comments, but we also are requiring a motion, just a recommendation. So it is City Council who ultimately approves the report and officially approves it being sent from staff to HCD. So basically, we are recommending your support of the report and recommendation that City Council approve the final approval, essentially.
All right. I think unless someone else has something to say, this would be the appropriate time. So I'll look for a motion to support this report and recommend its acceptance by the City Council.
I would like to make that motion.
All right. So we have a motion on the table for Mr. Doran.
I'll second it. Good, Mr. DeCarty.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments before we vote? All right, hearing none. I will once again call the role, Mr. DeCarty.
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mr. Cale?
Yes.
Ms. Tate? Oh, Ms. Tate has left. And I am absolutely in support. So that makes four out of four commissioners present in support. And the motion passes with Commissioners Barnes, Kennedy, and Tate absent for this vote. All right, thank you very much to staff and to all who went through all of these documents. At this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sandermeier regarding informational items.
Yes, good evening again. For the next meeting on March 22nd, we have a single-family home. And then the Menlo Portal Project will be on the agenda for an EIR scoping and also a study session. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
We certainly see a lot of projects from a certain housing developer. And I guess that's part of why we're doing so well. Any questions from commissioners?
No hands.
All right. No hands. That sounds like time to end the meeting. So thank you all, and good luck. I'll get to participate in a more normal manner next week. Good night. The meeting is closed as of 9:31 PM.
Be well. Thank you, staff, on all these projects. Have a good evening.